Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, key silence or cell phones or electronic devices? And we do have some additions to the agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, under Personnel, we've added a number two part-time CTE teacher with an action. We'll give you more info on that. And then under Other, Item D, K through 12, Elliot, update.
All right.
That is not on your agenda, so you have to have that.
Any other additions, deletions? Then I would consider a motion to accept the agenda with the...
Additions.
Additions.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, passes. This are comments. You don't want to be under that one. It's understandable. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda, where we have the minutes of the previous monthly board meeting, monthly cash flow, including investments, monthly bills paid, monthly bills paid in the activities account. I did not have any donations in mind, and I always like to read them, so I crossed it out because there weren't on this month. And the personnel summary sheet. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Special board reports with possible action. We're going to start tonight with activities.
Nothing, really nothing.
Okay. And we will move on to curriculum, and Ryan is up, and he is very excited.
Always. Um, very short.
Nice job.
Some.
Uh, so a couple of things on there. The big one that happened in August, it's early in August, we did our data retreat, so we got our administrators, we had carpenters come in, um, looking at our data from last spring. The Star Test and MC test is still embargoed, so that, yeah, this week, the 24th is when it opens up. Um, but through the DLT, because it's a invited meeting, we were able to go through that data and have conversations around that data. This is in public until 24th, so we did a lot of conversations around where we see trends. And looking at those pieces, we'll do a summary at the DLT, actually tomorrow, with that. And we have some draft goal language for moving into the next school year, so we can share that. The DLT is your main activity on a game beat up. The stable package is the workshop week schedule, and just so you guys have a copy of that. Next week, our teachers all return. We had new teachers start today, so it was a full day with eight, nine new staff members here. Um, and we really had, we had a good time today, but we filled their brains, so we'll be there. Um, so they have, uh, well, half of them are special education teachers, and so they will actually go to Columbia and have four more days of training and listening. Um, and then we have all teachers return on Monday, on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, have some schedules.
I just have to make, it looks like a great schedule, but I do have to make a comment on the fact that if you've been watching any TikToks or Facebook reels, a lot of them lately are all about how teachers just love, uh, professional development and not being in their classrooms in the beginning of the school year.
I'm sure that they come in really positively.
Yeah, it's very positive, right?
I should probably make TikToks for you.
I just have to comment on that, because there's a lot of them right now.
I could only imagine. Um, couple of highlights for the workshop schedule. We have EAs coming in for three days. So we have two of them onsite here, and then we had an optional third day with Sourcewell. So we had quite a bit of time for EAs to help bring them up in that training piece, but also make them be part of that team, so we're excited to have them on board. Uh, letters training and catalyst training for elementary, catalyst is the continuation, letters is very few. Um, and then personalized learning, that conversation from that profile of a graduate, what we're collecting. We are moving on that as well, and that's happening in K-12 on that personalized. And the third thing is actually Mike's report, which is the meeting schedule.
There we go.
Uh, meeting schedule is the other handout that you have, um, so that we have the school calendar scheduled, and then we have the meeting schedule, um, so our staff home committee meetings are on there, ECP when they meet, DLT meetings, staff home meetings, on that.
Any questions for Ryan today? Wow, we're very proud of you. Good job.
One more thing.
Love it. Anything else from curriculum? Awesome. And we're going to move on to facilities and start with the athletic project update.
Well, uh, here's where we're at with the athletic complex. Uh, it has been seeded. Um, grass is starting to come up. There's some issues there with some of the landscape that, uh, we felt between Holden and myself that wasn't done as well as we had hoped, so we need to have some of that pieces. They need to come back and fix some areas there that they did not do very well. Uh, the other thing happened is the day after it's seeded is the next day it downpours and a lot of it washed out. So we got to fix some of those areas as well. The dugouts are done, painted, updated, fencing is done. We do need to get the fencing guy back for some gates, the wind, the screens, and the fall poles. So that's a couple of things we're waiting for, uh, and then, um, the trap needs to get painted, yep. And then also the discus cage will be starting, uh, here sometime next, uh, I think this week. So, um, it's coming, we're getting there finally. Um, it's nice to see green grass, green area, but wish it was a few weeks ago, but irrigation's running and it's raining, so it's getting there.
And I, to be honest, I got a text a week or two ago about how nice the green grass is starting to look, so.
Yeah, takes, takes its process, you know, it takes time, but we have a big gap.
But to hear people being happy.
Yep.
Awesome.
That's kind of where we're at with the athletic, or the athletic complex. So, uh, speakers, you know, they have to be put up yet for the two complexes. There's a few things I was gonna ask here and there, but it'll, it'll be there finally.
Awesome. Any questions for the athletic project? Okay, then we're going to move on to the 2020 project completed, roofing.
I put on your desk, um, we are finally done with the 2020 project. The roofing has not been for the last very hard range, so we think we have all the roofing leaks fixed and taken care of. We did keep track of all the extra manpower that we had to do to clean up from all that and some of the other costs. So we deducted about five thou, a little over $5,300. We helped from Herzog, and they agreed to that, so, uh, we'll make the, make the final payment to Herzog, so the books will be closed on the 2020 project three years later. We're good there.
Any other questions on the 2020 project? Awesome. And let's move on to budget. We're going to start with business manager's report. Sorry, I forgot that. Is there anything else for facilities?
No, but you skipped about two other ones.
Not on mine.
I got personnel policy.
Personnel and policy?
I got.
Something we might have changed, though. We, uh, we updated today because we wanted her to talk first.
Yeah, budget and personnel and policy.
Going on Monday.
Oh, okay.
We just swept, swapped the spots.
Oh, she's on the paper version.
Sorry.
I didn't get it. No.
Yep.
Okay, so budget did not meet. We will meet in September in regards to LUDs, so, uh, audit is underway. They were onsite last week for field work, and so they're still asking and retrieving information from us, but the field work is done. Uh, so next, we're going to start with, I have to do the title application, get all that funding moving, and then we are going to start with a LUD that will be certified in September. Um, updated ADM, just to give you an idea of where we're currently at. Of course, these will change within the first week of school, but what we have right now, I did a comparison of 6-2 2023 to what we currently have for 9-5 and 23, and we have 1,144 heads on 6-2. And right now, we're proposing, we're expecting 1,281 heads on September 5th. So that's a difference of 137, so that brings, that's a difference of 193,000. Rounded, let's go 194,000 with what we budgeted in June to what we're expecting now in September. That is all, yeah. Any questions?
Any questions for business manager remain? All right. Thank you. Sorry, I was making notes for myself. All right, anything else from budget? All right, the next on my sheet is personnel.
Madam Chair and members, you, I think you have this teachers on call handout, did you do that? I don't know if you, or it's not, sorry.
If it's in.
It's in your math class, or it's on your desk there too. So, um.
I didn't see it on.
It's not on your desk?
No.
Okay. Um, did a comparison to districts around us that use teachers on call for subpay. Currently, we're at $135 a day. Most of them are around 140, Pequot's at 145. Um, so I, I would make a recommendation to, uh, increase that subpay to be in line with our area of schools. I would make a recommendation to be in line with Pequot, because I'm going to guess that some of these that are 140 will be bumping it up maybe five ups as well. So I would make a recommendation to bump the subpay up to $145 a day, which would be an increase of $10 a day for subs. You know, it's hard to get them, and then I think to be comparable to other schools, it would be good for us to do that. Uh, and we have a little budget to do that, so.
All right.
I'll second.
Motion, Becky has seconded. Any questions, comments, or concerns on raising our subpay rate?
So this is, this is the pay that they get if they work in school day.
Right, yep, and if it's a half a day, they, I think they half that, that noon to 3:30 or whatever. And we used to, if you remember right during COVID, if they worked so many days and we bumped them a little bit too, well, that kind of went away after that contract went away, so to be honest with you, it's kind of, a lot of the subs that we get already had that kind in there anyway, so it's just kind of changing the language, I guess you could say, different than that S or L or something.
Any other questions? Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number two, part-time CTE teacher.
Um, this kind of came up kind of quick. Uh, we have posted for a part-time CTE teacher, and, um, through the application process, uh, we do have a licensed CTE person that is interested in some kind of part-time, uh, work. And we currently have a really high need in high school in our shop class, shop area, industrial tech. We have large numbers in there. We also have a shortage of places where we can put kids in fifth hour. Um, Jason and Toc, and Jason and I, Ryan and Toc this morning, that, um, we could really use some additional, uh, Woods industrial CTE type programming. We have a spot in fifth hour where we're short offerings, and a lot of those kids get placed in classes that they really don't want to be in. Uh, and we have a shop class open in fifth hour. So if we can make it work out with the candidate and having a licensed person, as we get bigger, it would be nice to maybe have that additional CTE Woods person, and, uh, it's a retired candidate that's moving up to the area that kind of only wants to work part-time. Uh, they're very hard to find. It's kind of back years ago, if you remember, when we were kind of heavy in science, but we knew we had a chemistry teacher that was there, and we didn't really have the chemistry job. Um, so we kind of created it, kind of the same thing here, I would think, uh, kind of. We, we could get by without that Woods person right now, uh, kind of create a coursework where it's kind of, uh, Woods Tech, kind of use the technology side of things, almost like just building a, um, hands-on type thing, or maybe the design of it, maybe, and of coursework. Um, so I'm thinking of maybe an hour or two hours a day at most, which would be about .37 tops. Uh, with like Missy said in the budget, we have room for it in the budget, we have the need in fifth, fifth hour, and we have shop class open, so I would recommend that, make the recommendation that we, um, look to add on that .37 Woods industrial CTE teacher for those, for those, meet those needs. Do you have any questions or want to make a motion first?
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Uh, questions, comments, and concerns?
I think it's a great idea. Excellent.
Does person also start anyway?
We haven't interviewed yet, so we, there's, I mean, this is kind of preliminary. We don't know if it'll work out or not, but at least we have the permission to, you know, add it to the budget. If we can make it work, and if the candidate's quality, you know, we're not just going to.
Hire anybody?
Hire anybody, we want to make sure it's, but on paper, it looks really good, so.
If that person isn't a great fit, would you just post it then?
It's posted now.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, personnel did not meet, so other than that, is there anything else from personnel that... What, policy?
We did not meet. We have one.
Thought you had it on last time. You did great.
I'm good for the year.
I like that. I like that. Other, update on student enrollment numbers.
We have this on your desk. It says current as of today, um, this morning, we did pick up some more kindergartners, so we're up to 93 in kindergarten, and then we have some on the waitlist in fourth grade, sixth grade, and seventh grade. But other than that, you can see where we have the five sections or four sections. The grade is updated as of today. The goals are all falling within the guideline of policy 630. Uh, and Sarah and I talked about that fourth section, uh, adding a fifth, possible fifth section. We don't have a room at this one. We would displace another program, so.
I would lay money that that kindergarten number will be 94, because I seen Josh giving a tour when I was sitting in here, and he looked at them.
There will be some that drop off on AF school, but that usually happens, so I'm guessing that'll be up to a little bit, but.
The grade is what we're using for four sections and five sections, follow the grade.
Yep, yep. We have four, five sections of K-1 and 2, and we have four sections of 3 and 4.
And on the waitlist, just remind me again, if they had a sibling?
They would have already been in.
They're already in.
Yep, these are all people that don't have a sibling here, or we, I, and I don't know if they, I don't know how long they've been on the waitlist. They may not be interested anymore. We would have to call them. So if it drops down to 104, we would call one of them and... Four, three minutes, yep.
And if you live out of the district, you open enroll, and two kids can fit in the classes, but one can't. The one goes on the waitlist, is on the waitlist, right? Just making sure I have that straight.
Correct.
Otherwise, we have to take them, even if we're past our numbers.
If they're in our district, we take them. Correct, yep.
That's what I said.
Which is why the one query gets that 114.
Yeah, I get to see that.
And that's a group that when we came through, we did add five sections of.
Yeah, yeah, and they've been big, they're huge classes since kindergarten.
That seems like even bigger than it's been.
Yeah, I think it started at like 109 or something when they were kindergarten. It's always been big. It end over our number, but it's got.
And then we'll see when that fifth class gets to ninth grade, and there's this switch, stuff that happens.
Right. We have picked up quite a few seniors this year, um, which is odd, you know, I think we gained seven or eight seniors.
Wow.
That doesn't happen very often, and we did pick up quite a few ninth graders as well, we gained nine or 10 ninth graders.
That's good.
Yeah, it's usually that fifth grade, ninth grade, kind of, are the two classes that, uh... So this will change every day. I don't tell, I mean, it could change daily, but that's as updated as of this one.
If the trends continue, will like they be, find space for such?
Well, at what point, you know, I mean, you know, we don't have a room, so, you know, if it gets, we aren't taking any open enrollment, so they have to move in. So, you know, if they gain three more kids, now you're at 27 and a half, 27, you're not too far over our recommendation. I mean, it's not the greatest number, but it falls in line with what our policy states. Like I said to you guys before, once you do that, and you know, you're opening your door to, let's say, you know, you don't have a space, you do that in other grades too, if you get, you could have eight kids move in in another grade, and then you're at 108, you know, what are you going to do with that, you know? You kind of open the door. I, I mean, that's not the greatest, but you got a school, you got a size, and that's what we built before, was four and five sections, and those, so. I'm not saying you can't do it, I'm just telling you as a board, you, when you walk that line, you've kind of said, we're going to do it, and then you don't have, you know, spots for those other grades.
In my opinion, we are definitely on that line for there, but that would be a full board vote, and space is space. You can't pull it out of the air.
Dispensing music on a cart or technology on a cart, or, which you can do, but then you got to add.
And if, depending on where the number goes, that's something to consider at some point.
So that's where we're at, updated.
Okay. Uh, anything else on the open enrollment numbers? Okay. E-learning plan?
You have on your handout on your desk. Uh, E-learning, uh, we updated just a few pieces of it. Some of it was still kind of language that kind of went with the pandemic. Uh, we took some of that out. Uh, it doesn't really, it's not really pandemic related, it's more about snow day related, I guess. We are not huge, uh, I would say our administration, and I think you guys as board members probably are not huge on E-learning days. That's kind of our conversations that we've had. Um, two pieces that we added is R and L, we treat kids, do not take their Chromebooks home. Um, so it would be hard to have an E-learning day in the morning of, it would be a snow day. The only times we used E-learning last year was when it was kind of, we knew it was kind of coming. We kind of prepared for it, which I think does allow teachers a little bit of an opportunity to say, here's your work, here's what we want you to do, rather than last second, just throwing something out there and wasting the day. So, uh, yeah, but at least they wrote about it or something, you know? But, um, so this is updated, it's on our website. Uh, I would just ask that you make an action to approve it. And basically, it just states that, you know, if E-learning day would kind of be, it has to be well-advanced, you know, you know, like day before that it could be some bad weather, we have to send Chromebooks home. Otherwise, we can't have them the day of, so.
And you can only have like five a year.
Five a year, correct, yep.
Wouldn't somebody like to make a motion on the E-learning day plan that's enclosed in our packet?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Questions, comments, or concerns? And I like E-learning days, because if we have a very snowy year, if we can get a couple of E-learning days and not add them at the end of the year.
That's where they could get purpose. We do have two days in the calendar that we can use, so they're definitely, there's.
I'm glad there's a limit on how many you can have, because I don't like them all the time.
And I don't, nobody really likes to bring kids back late after Memorial Day too, because then there isn't much going on there either. So it's kind of a, you kind of use your judgment and do the best you can, throwing them out there just because we can use them, let's use them. That doesn't make sense, so.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Open house update?
Uh, we do have, uh, Madam Chair, a couple of open house dates coming up on Wednesday of this week, 23rd. We have fifth grade and ninth grade, and any other new students. Uh, one is at 5:30, and the other is at 6:00. And then we have the big open house for all the other remaining grades on the 30th, which is a week from Wednesday, from 4:30 to 7:00.
Any questions on open house? Now it's your turn.
Thank you.
You're welcome, welcome.
Madam Chair, I'll introduce Todd. Todd is our direct food director.
Food director.
Food director from K through 12, Elliot, formerly Hobbie Up, so he wanted to give you guys a little update.
Little update, given there's a snow days or late starts. If there is late start, we will serve breakfast in the district breakfast, lunch all year, everybody else. And then I just got done starting the menus, including little huskies as a separate from elementary, different regulations. And basically, that's all I got, except for I learned one thing last week in the eight-hour video training, I can't say.
Fun.
And served two types of milk for breakfast at lunch. So breakfast will see chocolate at 1%.
Well, they'll hate that.
I know, they will.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
The way they would have had a cat chocolate.
Yeah, I, I thought when you said two types, it was going to be like one percent.
1% still.
For all.
Why is it not with the police period?
Yeah.
Um, just another thing, we are going to keep doing some of the upgrade, food upgrades with some of the extra dollars that we have to spend down. There's some items that we have, uh, a husky burger, I think, we're going to do a little bit of the shift.
And husky chicken is going out of the elementary, but it's going into high school both ways, grilled and ready.
It's a better, higher-quality chicken breast, and the chicken strips or?
Strips, and then.
Salad bar, more absence of salad bar.
Yep, duckers.
So we'll keep doing that a little bit to spend down some of those money, some of those dollars that we need to do.
Okay.
Have a little bit higher quality, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, well, thank you, Todd.
Thank you. Superintendent update?
Um, not a whole lot of items. Uh, you have on your desk the little screen hanky or your glasses hanky that we purchased this year. We give some of these out to, uh, when we had a scan, uh, we give these out at our Silver Tower. Then we also got these little pens that we give out to students, new students when they turn, where they come to look at. We got some of these as promo items, so I gave you one of those guys. Um, CTC Center has a new website, uh, on their own Facebook site that's linked, so we can do a lot more advertising, more things on that CTC versus putting it on our website. And then I handed out to you a flyer of the concerts that are coming up this year. We also have another, we're trying to book another one that's kind of an acoustic set of some, uh, some guys from the area. Um, so we're trying to work on that, so you can have that handout. Um, Chromebook handout policy, I want to thank Ryan and Alicia Davis, uh, who really picked up the slack to kind of work through our Chromebook distribution policy. So you have different handout, different dates of when we can do that. There's more times than just open house. And, uh, kind of working on the, on the way that we hand them out with a little bit better tracking and handing them in. So we're, we, we kind of missed out on some things there that we need to do.
And K through 4 doesn't take them home?
K through 4 does not take them home unless we have some families that need the device, because they don't have one. They can request a cake at home, you know, for a family that doesn't have one, that would like to have it at home. They can request that through Mr. Smith, uh, but that, other than that, would be only bad weather that we miss out. Otherwise, they leave them in the, in the classroom if they're home. They still need to fill out the paperwork, though. You got it. Um, DLT meeting tomorrow, uh, from 11:00 to 1:00. You're all welcome to come. We do have lunch. It's hard for some of you. Uh, we have an agenda that Ryan talked about to go through some of the things with, uh, kind of excited about the school-in-school that came from that group a year ago in fifth and sixth grade. Uh, we'll review data and some other things. Uh, fall sports, they're already in their second week. We had really good numbers there. Uh, 56 in football, last year made the 040s, uh, 9 through 12. We have 42 volleyball, that's up quite a bit, and 22 cross-country, and that's just 9 through 12 numbers. So cross-country's down a little bit. And that's just 9 through 12 numbers. Cross-country's down a little bit, the rest are up quite a bit. So we're excited about those programs. And the last thing, question on that, the last thing I was going to share with you is on workshop week, we're trying something different this year. We have a couple of food trucks that are coming. And rather than having, we're trying to keep, you know, they got to go out to eat, it's an hour of their day. We're having kind of working lunches, and we gave them a coupon, which you guys all can have them. We have a couple of food trucks coming Monday, Tuesday, then we also have food trucks coming on Thursday. Mr. Moen has a booster club activity with a day between volleyball, and then food trucks, the bouncy houses, and then the football game that night. So we're kind of getting some food trucks around through the school year. Excited about that. So we give every staff member a $5 coupon to use at the food trucks for those two days.
Don't forget about the booster club, because that just takes money out of their pocket.
On Monday, Tuesday?
No, I have games and such when we have food trucks there.
Well, you guys approved it.
We did, and that's why I said, thank the booster club, if they, yeah, just.
Did they, did they take some back to the booster club?
They didn't last year.
Um, and I think, I think that's it. Can I get any other workshop lead? Oh, Avions is feeding the, two others. Avions is feeding all the teachers. The name of the open house, they're having a pasta feed, so that's courtesy of, I have to say, K through 12. Can't get used to saying K through 12 Elliott. And then also, Ed Foundation is doing hot dogs and brats again that night, trying to do something outside. I think it's nice, some tents, some families that want to have hot dogs and brats in the open house. So that's all I got.
Any questions, comments, or concerns from Mr. Ballberg? Then I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns about that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all. Nothing to sign, correct?